Today is on May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. This time I will ask the clerk to call the roll please.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Bonner?
Present.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Present.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Clayber?
Here.
Thank you for having a form president for this time for the president of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there any approval of corrections of the minutes of the regular board meeting that was held on May eighth, two thousand and eighteen? There are no corrections to be made, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
As a motion I call our trusty cap to approve the minutes of May eighth, two thousand and eighteen, we need a second.
A second.
And our trusty clerk will take your role please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Present.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
The motion passed, thank you. Before we open the meeting to the public, if you have anything to state to the board, if you stand up and give us your name and your reasons for investing in the board. This time I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
As a motion I call about trusty Bonner, we need a second.
Second.
And our trusty Richardson will take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes. The motion passed, thank you, but the meeting is now open to the public, other comments?
My public comment is I wanted to address the board but you didn't look up and see me standing.
Well, you stand so you can go ahead.
Well, I don't want to take away from my minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and that was in regards to Travis here?
Yes.
Did you receive my email?
Actually, no, I didn't, to be honest.
Pardon me?
I said, actually, no, I didn't, to be honest.
For the record, can you say your name, please?
I'm sorry, but I'm a little hard of hearing.
I'm sorry, for the record, can you say your name, please?
Jenel Pinsky.
Thank you.
Okay, you go ahead.
I sent an email to him three days ago about the sidewalk, and I wanted to show to him today after the meeting, a little girl falling on her bike in front of the house in the crack that I mentioned to you. That happened today at five fifty-five P.M.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I want to say, that part. Now, if anybody wants to go ahead and open her.
No, you got to go now.
Huh?
No, it is open now, so you got, go ahead. Do you have anything else?
You usually go on that side first.
Do you have anything else?
Go ahead.
Yes, I do.
Ma'am, was this in front of your house?
Pardon me?
Was this in front of your house?
Yes.
Yes, proceed.
Okay, thank you. I was reading on the Internet today about the Illinois Open Meeting Act. Are you familiar with that, if you aren't familiar? Okay, and it talks about video recording. I have a copy right here, it talks about recording of a meeting that may a member of the public record an open meeting, and the answer is yes. This is from Lisa Madigan's office. I give you a copy if you like this. So, that's my comment, because I was told that I could not. But apparently it says in the Illinois.
I mean, I don't recall anyone here telling me that you could not.
You could have.
Okay, thank you.
The meeting recorded right now, the meeting is being recorded right now. What?
But by anyone in the public, not by me, too.
Oh, anyone.
I was told I couldn't. That's all I say.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, on May eighth, I noticed on the village website, you know, and according to that act, you have ten days to get the, what you, you approved today. You approved the May eighth meetings. You have ten days to do it to your, put it on your website, but there wasn't anything for last month. So, that's my one concern. And I saw.
Are you referring to the minutes, I mean, the minutes were just approved today for May eighth, so they're in the real?
Yeah, that's, see, I didn't know that until I read the act. So, I didn't know that.
Okay.
Okay, I just knew it today. Okay. But, on April twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, on the open meeting, they only posted a portion of my comments. Ms. Luc Shawis only put that Ms. Lepinski asked Cap and Trustee Bonner if they felt they were being harassed. That was it. But that's not all that I said. I said much more, and I included in this statement here that I, I mentioned more, okay? I just want to say that. I mentioned more, but because it paints a picture of me being wrong instead of complete.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your comment. Are there any other public comments?
Ian Johnson, I just wanted to ask, is it, right now, for old microwave or building, something, something old, a small thing, can we put it outside for the garbage thing now? Or we, presently we have to bring it over there where, by the senior citizen building where Dwayne works, so can we just put it out by the garbage now?
I don't think, that was for electronics. I don't think they've really included microwave, because that was a couple of weeks ago. That's not ongoing.
Okay, so, so you cannot put it out, and it wasn't for microwave, you said?
No, you can tell them to put it in your garbage.
I can get it, I can get it in the garbage can, you know, but if you, if you, if it's a microwave, you put it in the garbage can, I don't want to leave all my garbage there, you know what I mean? But I can, I can get it in the garbage can, that's okay to put it in the garbage can?
They'll sort it, they'll sort it.
At this time, I would not have a specific answer for that, I mean, I would have to investigate that.
Okay, I'll wait for that, I'll wait for that.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jim Durkin. On a positive note, I'd like to thank the mayor and the board for the consideration on the vehicle stickers for senior citizens. Second of all, I'd like to mention, it seems like we may have a situation developing for the mall. Is there any, how can I say, answers to it?
I think the police chief has been in the process of devising a plan for some extra presence, and I believe it has already been implemented for a couple of weekends already, and I think in the next week or so, I think you'll see some of that come to fruition.
All right, thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments?
My name is Maria Muñoz, I live in Cajun. I just wanted to thank you for choosing my sidewalk to be part of, you know, fixing it. So, I'm getting a new sidewalk, so thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome. I mean, you had made the request, and if the request comes in due season and due time, then we try to assess those. If they are in safe and, you know, we're always trying to eliminate those, so we don't have any issues in the community. Anyway, are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments?
I just wanted to say I called in a request too, but nothing's done to my sidewalk.
I don't think it, yeah, I don't think we got to you yet.
Pardon me?
Because I don't think we got to you yet. Because I don't think we got to you yet.
Well, okay.
Now, I'll double check it. But this time I will ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
A motion I call by trusty Bonner, close the meeting to the public, we need a second.
I second.
Second by trusty Greer, will take your role please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Our motion has the meeting is now closed to the public. On Thursday, we had a celebration for Ms. Mary Roski, you know, who was the oldest resident in the village of Burnham, that being ninety-nine years old. We had a lot of participation, and Mrs. Erasiv invited a kid from the school to come and say a happy birthday to her. It was very nice and related, and we tried to invite as many people as possible that knew her and that she knew them, you know, to come out to celebrate with her. And she was very thankful and very related, showed a lot of gratitude and affection, and, you know, so it worked very well. And we will put some little pictures up on the website, and we also sent her home a police export. So, she's felt very special. And so, she was born in Burnham, she went to, she attended Burnham School, and she's still in Burnham ninety-nine years later. Okay, the, as Ms. Muñoz said, the contractor did stop pulling sidewalks today for repair, and that will continue for the next couple of weeks, and we apologize for any inconvenience that that may cause. And I would also like to thank the trusty, trusty Greer, and trusty Garcia, who's not here this evening, and when you want to be here, I appreciate you letting me know when you're not going to be here. At this time, we would hear a report from clerk Ruth.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd just like to remind everyone again that this coming Thursday, May twenty-fourth, the Secretary of State will be here at the Village Hall between ten A.M. and two P.M. So, if you need to renew your driver's license, state I.D., renew your plate sticker, you can do that here at the Village Hall on Thursday from ten A.M. to two P.M. And I believe you can do that a year in advance. And is that my hat?
And this.
Oh, yes. And the vehicle stickers are now available for purchase. You can come to the Village Hall and purchase your vehicle sticker. We require vehicle registration in order to purchase it. The stickers are forty-five dollars for passenger, are sixty-five dollars for trucks, and seniors, the first one is no charge per household. The second one is fifteen dollars, and then the third one is thirty-five. And?
Thank you, clerk Ruth, for your information, and that was four. This time, we want to report from our trusty Greer.
Good evening, everyone. I hope that you can just bear with me, I have a summer cold, so I'm trying my best to get through my reports. Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve on the purchase of two vehicles for use in the police department. That will not exceed an amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, are there any questions on that?
Yeah, it said thirty thousand each, all right, what is that?
That will not exceed the amount.
Oh, the total for both vehicles is thirty grand?
That's what I said.
Yes, well, we're looking to do one new vehicle, one used vehicle.
Okay, are there any other questions on board? Okay, proceed, trusty Greer.
I would like to make a motion to approve on the purchase of two vehicles for use in the police department. That will not exceed an amount of thirty thousand dollars. Second.
As a trusty Greer has made a motion to approve the expense of added value of the two police vehicles, and trusty Richardson has said it, and will take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you, proceed, trusty Greer.
This is the Burnham Fire Medical Report, this is for the month of April. There were sixteen calls, there were fourteen during the day and two during the night. And for the ambulance, they were pretty busy, there were forty-four, twenty-six day calls and eighteen night calls. Just to want to remind everyone, our annual garage sale will be eight July the fourteenth, twenty eighteen, at the community center. Hour is from nine to three, set of time is seven o'clock, start staying up. It's ten dollars per vendor, bring your own table and bring your own tent, and whatever you need to make your day successful. I cannot emphasize, bring your own table and bring your own tent. It's a good day, it's a fun day, it's a day to come out and meet your neighbors, meet your community, make yourself some money. Not only is it a garage sale, it's a craft sale, it's a base sale, whatever sale you want it to be, it can be that. But it's a fun day, and come out and meet your neighbors. Just want to remind the Catholic charities, they have so many wonderful, wonderful programs. And the program that I mentioned at our last meeting, and I am again mentioning today, because it is so important, it's called the Immigrant Survivors Project. The Catholic charities provide comprehensive specialized legal services to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, dating violence, stalking. They offer immigration legal assistance, including representation in matters of V.A.W.A. V.A.W.A. Some of you may not know what that stands for, but it means violence against women essence. And they also provide assistance in U.V.S.I. and other related remedies. And U.V.S.I. means victims that's been involved are a victim in criminal matters and also their immediate families. So, these are some very important services. So, if you would like some information on it, just let me know, and I have information for you. There's a Spudgement Summit, this is June the second, we're going to like some information on it. It's going to be at Kennedy King College, and they said sixty-three forty-three South Hospital, Hospital Street. And it applies to non-federal crimes that have occurred in the state of Illinois. Again, that Spudgement Summit is June the second, twenty eighteen, and if you would like any information on it, please see me after the meeting. Reminder that CEDA, CEDA is offering a scholarship program for the twenty eighteen year, and if you would like a copy of more information about this scholarship program, please see me after the meeting. And I think that's it. It's so much involved, and I can go on and on, but I stopped, thank you.
I would add to the report, that was very good useful information. And the garage sale last year, the Torrance Bridge wasn't open, and it was a huge success.
Absolutely.
So, this year, it should be even bigger and better and more fun, so I'm really looking forward to it.
Absolutely.
With that chance to make some extra money, start preparing things now.
Absolutely. It's a great day, isn't it?
Yes.
And of course, you'll be baking cake, you know.
Well, excuse me, ma'am, since you addressed me, I'd like to just mention to trusty Greer that a person, people not able to get their tickets, they sign up and get their spot, they can also get it at the time of the picnic, at the time of the garage sale.
All right, thank you. Trusty, ordinance resolution in plan, I mean, the absence of trusty Richardson.
Skip public work.
Public work.
Skip, I was like, where, huh?
I guess ain't nothing on you. Okay, I'm sorry. Public work, trusty.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Public Works has been doing general cleaning around, throughout the village, and during the spring and summer months, it tends to be more trash and garbage, you know, not intentional, but it just happens. So, if you see anything on your curb or a lot of the bushes, you know, to make the job a little easier, if you just pick it up and, you know, get rid of it. And, Ms. Lepinski?
Yes.
Definitely after the meeting, just show me what's going on, and apologize for not seeing your email, but I don't check it every day. But, we'll get on top of that.
And by orders of the mayor, I would instruct the police officer to write anybody a citation that's littered the street, including kids. Okay, thank you, trusty Clayber, for that information. Ordinance resolution in plan, trusty Cap, will you take that, please?
Okay. Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the resolution number two zero one eight dash R dash zero zero five, library services agreement for two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen. A resolution authorizing and approval, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement to provide library services between the village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, and the Board of Library Trustees of the city of Calumet City, Cook County, Illinois. So, it's a standard ordinance every year with Calumet City. So, discuss, so I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number two zero one eight dash R dash zero zero five, library services agreement for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. A resolution authori, approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement to provide library services between the village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, and the Board of Library Trustees of the city of Calumet City, Cook County, Illinois.
So, there's a motion to call by trusty Cap to approve this resolution, from now, we need a second, please, for number seven.
A second.
Second by trusty Clayber, will take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed, proceed, trusty Cap.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the resolution number two zero one eight dash R dash zero zero four, class eight classification for one thirty-nine zero zero Torrance Avenue. A resolution supporting a proposed class eight classification for one hundred and thirty-nine hundred Torrance Avenue, Burnham, Cook County, Illinois. Tax pin numbers twenty-nine dash zero one dash two zero eight dash zero one five, twenty-nine dash oh one dash two zero eight dash zero sixteen, twenty-nine dash oh one dash two oh eight dash zero seventeen, and twenty-nine dash zero one dash two oh eight dash zero one eight.
Okay, so, the, the alternatives here that represent the company, we just found that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, trustees and clerk, my name's Adam Dodson, I'm with Sandberg Law Firm. Our current client is United Trust Bank, they've owned this property for a few years now. Many of you may be aware, this particular building is about eight thousand square feet right along Torrance Avenue. It's been abandoned for some time, actually several years, and luckily enough, there is a buyer for this property. The gentleman's name is Juan Otega, he runs Otega Complete Auto Service. He has a facility in the city of Chicago right now on Buffalo. He employs four individuals there, and he's looking to expand. And an opportunity with Mr. Otega is to purchase this property and actually hire five new employees. And as he has indicated, he would like to hire locally, being that it's much easier to get somebody to get to work if they're only a mile or two away, as opposed to being five to ten miles away. So, he will make every effort to hire local residents for this facility. He will be making some improvements to the property, obviously with the bank holding it. The bank is going to minimize how much they put into the property while they hold it, and he'll be working on the deferred maintenance, whether it be painting, dressing up the landscaping, as well as doing some interior improvements. I understand that the building commissioner, Adina, has been through the building and has given some indication of what needs to be done in order for them to occupy the building. We're here this evening to ask for this resolution in order for this purchase to occur, being that the taxes in this location, if there is an occupation without a class eight, the taxes are pretty high. If indeed, he does get a class eight, he'll be able to manage it around fifteen thousand dollars a year, which if you do the math, you know, you're talking about over a thousand dollars a month that'd be dedicated to paying the taxes then. Unfortunately, when a bank holds a property, they don't try to get businesses in it, they'll keep it empty until they find somebody to go in and purchase it and occupy it themselves. So, understanding how Cook County taxes are, it is a struggle to maintain and operate a business here. This is the only way Mr. Otega believes that he'll be able to move forward, and he has this resolution of support from the village of Burnham. I'd be happy to answer any questions in regards to this project. I was here a few months ago in regards to another building that was owned by a bank, Providence Bank, and the nice thing is that you're starting to see activity in many of these properties that banks are owning. They're very relieved that they're seeing individuals that are looking to invest in the neighborhood here. So, again, hopefully what we can do is continue to see this continued momentum, not only Burnham, but other suburban communities here, because the fact is, is that there are individuals out there wanting to grow their business, and Mr. Otega is one of those.
So, when do you anticipate that they'll be closing?
As soon as, as soon as you give indication here that you're going to support the resolution, they will probably close immediately, because the bank has the ability to do a quick close on this property.
Now, the employer that they anticipate hiring, so they're looking like a certified mechanic or what?
I think they'll be looking at both, I mean, obviously you want to have some senior people in there, but I think there's going to be opportunities, because not only there's going to be major work on vehicles, there's going to be maintenance too. So, having somebody that's a little bit lower skilled would be an opportunity to grow into the mechanic industry. So, again, I know many high schools are starting to focus and look at opportunities for trades, and those are one of the things that you're going to start seeing here, that businesses that are going to be looking for local labor, and I'll be quite honest with you, for the last ten to fifteen years, it's been difficult to find good employees. So, again, if the high schools continue to do what they're doing, there's going to be ample opportunity, because there's going to be businesses continuing to pop up in this area that's going to provide opportunity.
Okay, so, when you get a chance, and after everything is closed, and computer up off maybe a summary of kind of like what he might be looking for?
Sure, most definitely. Mr. Otega will be happy to do that.
Any other questions on the board?
The class eight classification, does that just lower the taxes? Is that basically what that does?
Well, that's the end game. Really, what the class eight incentive does is actually lower the assessment. Currently, commercial and industrial properties are assessed at twenty-five percent, and residents are assessed at ten percent. So, this allows for the property to be lowered to a ten percent assessment, which would be equal to what a resident would be paying on their assessment. So, it's just putting their property on the same playing field as a residential property, because the impact of twenty-five percent right now is major. I mean, you're talking about the taxes being dumped, you're talking thirty thousand dollars a year if you were to occupy the building. Now, you're talking over twenty-five hundred dollars a month being dedicated before he can even pay his employees that he's got to pay the taxes on his property. So, being able to grow means you have to be able to actually control some of the expenses that are in the property, which again, property taxes are one of them. So, this particular incentive lasts ten years, it has the ability to be renewed, they would have to come back to the village, and the village would have to make a determination if indeed they would like to renew the resolution in supporting the incentive to continue for another ten years. But, in this instance, ten years is a good opportunity to get the business up and running, get it established, and see how the revenues are coming in, in order to be able to move forward in the future.
And those things are good, go down in the last eighty years, because I remember the regular property tax, the hormone was about sixteen percent, and I think for the industry industrial.
Yes.
So, he was thirty-eight, now he's thirty-eight.
That would be in two thousand and eight, when Assessor Cooligan made a quick change on the pen, and tried to create relief for everybody by saying their assessments were lower, but really it didn't change their taxes, it just lowered their assessment on the property. Again, it's an equalization based upon that.
He's been successful in Chicago.
I'm sorry.
Does he have successful business in Chicago?
Yes, he does, yes, he's been there operating for several years now.
Seven years.
Yes, yes, and four full-time employees.
This property, it was formerly an auto mechanic shop?
Yes, it is. It's, if you see, it's right where.
From Coolie, right?
Yes, 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 exactly.
Next to the credit union.
Right next to the credit union, I think Mr. Bolt is in that cross street.
Right, right.
I don't know how you cut those three that are going between the building.
We're going to figure somehow.
And that's also my concern, Mr. Dodson, is that, so, he's looking to purchase his property?
Yes, he is.
With the understanding that a class A will, eight will be granted to him?
There will be a support from, from the village to be able him to go to the assessor's office to finalize that assessment, renew assessment on the property.
Okay, so, as of right now, he has not purchased the property?
No, he has not closed on the property yet.
Okay, so, so we're approving a class eight for just the pens, not on the actual business?
Well, it's contingent upon, in other words, if, for whatever reason, they do close, then it would invalidate you. And that's what we know.
And my, also, my concern is, I've made comments before that, whoa, this property can be kept a little better here. And, and can you please tell Trust Bank that they could have done a better job in keeping up the property?
I understand, I will tell them, as I indicated before, many banks, they always like to pull back on the budget, unless somebody makes a statement or indicates that they would like to see something better. Because, obviously, everybody's always trying to minimize how much they're putting in a property when there's no activity on it. So, if indeed you have properties that you're concerned about, that any bank that may own in the community, all we, all you have to do is make a phone call to the bank to say, you need to get your maintenance crew to up your maintenance program.
So, how many banks do you represent?
Well, two, here in this community. Providence was the one, that facility was over there on Alice, and then United Trust. Those are the two that we have only clients in the village of Burnham. The bigger banks have different downtown attorneys, those things, but we're here in the south suburbs, Providence is a south suburban bank as well as United Trust.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. I proceed, Trustee Cap.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number two zero one eight dash R dash zero zero four, Class Eight Classification for one hundred thirty-nine hundred Torrance Avenue. A resolution supporting a proposed Class Eight Classification for one hundred thirty-nine hundred Torrance Avenue, Burnham, Illinois. Cook County, Illinois tax pin numbers twenty-nine oh one dash two oh eight dash fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. I won't read them all.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Cap. Uh, another motion on the floor, pass this resolution, uh, number two thousand eighteen. I would, I think it was before the Class Eight classification for one hundred thirty-nine Torrance. We need a second.
A second.
A second by Trustee Clayber, would you like to take a role?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner? Nay. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, motion passed. Congratulations and, uh.
Thank you.
And again, like we said before, I think this is pretty much the only way that we can bring these businesses into the town. Of knowing people willing to invest in Cook County, Cook County tax, but they're, they're, they're not. We understand that, appreciate the support of that, and the board understand that, and we will continue to work our best and help the village front. And also, I would like to say, for the last five, six, and seven years, there have been no taxes paid on this property. And now to be back on the tax note, that's a good thing for the town. Thank you.
And may I also add that there's already a few car repair companies right there in that corner. And think about that congestion. And that's something that the board is gonna have to address eventually.
Thank you, um, finance, Trustee Cap.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorizing the payment of this month's bills when funds become available? I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of this month's bills when funds become available.
Can you make a motion? So we need a second.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner? Abstain? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Do you have a thing on Trustee Cap?
No, that's a, oh, we need to set those pages for appropriation. No, I didn't get to that page. Okay, everybody. We'll do later.
Okay. That's all you had, actually?
Yes, thank you.
How about you, Jill, just Trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a reminder that if you have old working refrigerators, Tom Ed is still giving out fifty dollars. So, um, you can call them or they have a website you can go to and get the information to set it up. And you can also, that they offer for you.
Thank you, Trustee Richardson. Uh, pardon, right, right, and Trustee Bonner?
I've been talking closely with the, um, with the administration for the parks. If you notice anything out of place, uh, lights, broken equipment, please send that report into the clerk's office, eight six two nine one five zero. That's it.
When are they going to finish the, uh, putting the roof down?
All, all of the parks need a motion. We're, we're working on that.
Okay.
Also, um, Thornton Township, we're at Thornton Township, they're having their work, world's largest family cookout and barbecue. Sunday, July fifteenth, twenty eighteen, from ten a.m. till dusk. Bring your own grill, steppers event. And this is gonna be at Green Lake Horse Reserve on the corner of one hundred fifty-ninth and Torrance. Dancing, music, food, and more. Uh, for more information, you can call the Thornton Township's office, three one two six zero eight, six three five eight. That's not the office number, that's a three one two number. Okay, and that's gonna be July fifteenth, twenty eighteen. And there's more information if you might be.
Trustee, again, I would like to say, that's a very successful event. They have it every year. And if you're gonna come, you need to get there early because cars, uh, people come from everywhere. Very successful event.
Have they had it before?
Yes, yes.
When was the last time I went somewhere else?
Oh, it's been there. It's been there for over the, over four years.
They have a lot of parties, probably getting confused.
Right.
And I'm sure being aware of the.
So they have to have state police everybody out there, uh, guarding the track.
If they saw like that, I might have my camera in the front there. Thank you, Trustee La, thank you, Trustee Greer for the information. Uh, presentation of, of petitions, uh, we can take that away.
We'd like to present the winners of our, this year's vehicle sticker contest. Our winner for our passenger sticker this year was a student from Burnham School. He's an eighth grader. Um, his name is Javon Westbrook. Javon, would you like to stand up? Our other winner for the truck vehicle stickers is also a student from Burnham School. Um, she's a seventh grader and it's, um, Jay Kava Brown.
The sticker.
I would like, thank you for your dedicated work on the behalf of the Village of Burnham. Uh, myself, the clerk, and the board of trustees, and I'd like to say we thank you for the, for your service. And this will be displaced on every, he hit a truck in the Village of Burnham.
And along with that, she's winning, she won fifty dollars. And her family gets a free vehicle sticker.
How about you hold it, then?
Uh, Mr. Jimmy, you come on up?
They did all the work, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Uh, you keep it.
So, Mr. Johnson, after, uh, we have signed the, you know, to get all the.
Okay. So this is Javon Westbrook. He won for the passenger, um, vehicle sticker. And he also won fifty dollars and his family also gets a free vehicle sticker.
Congratulations.
This will be on every car in the Village of Burnham.
Which are on sale.
Thank you. Come down and see, I'm sorry.
They did a great job.
Well, I'd like, thank you, though. I'd like to thank the board also, allowing them the opportunity to express their creativity, right? And, and to be able to see that their hard work does pay off. Thank you very much.
Are there any communications or memorials of this month's visit? Is there any unfinished business? On the new bid, if you can take that, Trustee Cap.
Yes, discussion of consideration of and taking action on setting dates for the appropriation of the Village of Burnham for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand eighteen, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. So what do you think about June second, which is a Saturday?
I'm not gonna be here, but you'll have to go home.
How about Tuesday, June fifth?
Is that okay?
Tuesday, June?
Tuesday, October?
What day would be, six thirty?
June, April? Uh, June fifth, six thirty.
Okay, then we need another date. We have June ninth, which is Saturday, or?
You wanna do it Saturday instead of going to the moon?
We have a meeting at twelve anyway. Wanna do it after our meeting on the twelve?
Well, maybe go after the date.
I'd rather not have it after the meeting.
Um, then, the next day, what, after the thirteenth of June, or?
What day is the thirteenth for?
Wednesday?
Can we do the day after, June sixth?
Oh, I do.
I have a date. I have some, I have a time to get to the date, I mean, I'm busy that day.
What about the eleventh, or the day before the meeting? Is that okay, June eleventh? Is that okay?
And then if we need an extra day, we'll set it at that time.
Right, right.
So we'll kind of schedule for the fifth and the eleventh. Like six thirty, six thirty seven, eight thirty, maybe nine o'clock is the latest.
Six thirty, I'm up?
Yes, until like, say till nine, but somebody has to leave early, they can.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll call about Trustee Clayber to adjourn. We need a second.
A second to motion.
A second by Trustee Bonner, would you like to take a role?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, uh, for meeting the adjourn. Anybody else you, uh, of the young people who are here, to adjourn and meet, and we cannot legally go home without a speech, this is my statement.
So thank you, everyone, for coming. Congratulations.